Did you get any mail from, I think her name was Mary, a couple of months, been like three weeks ago, to introducing herself?
I don't know. Oh, taken George Allen's place? Maybe George Allen's place, or is this?
It's for that. At the point of 25.
I'm gonna go get the one that, she doesn't talk on in.
If I did, I'd be worried.
Plus he's gonna be down. He's got three, no, two people that are testing tomorrow. Over in Cochran, so he's gotta be in the center, and once he buys six, I think. He's, he goes to the easy up, so he's not gonna, he's gonna put him. Try to make it to get some money.
So you're done, or you're just like? I mean, I put our wood.
Um, maybe you'll be able to put on some.
Our wood, uh.
Pizza.
Then you put our wood. Put that over there.
Good evening.
Oh, yes.
Oh, Jessica. Okay.
Who bought Jenny's house then? Who bought Jenny's house?
I have heard of it. I don't know. Her brother called us in the other morning. Last week, it was your morning. He said. Who bought her house? He said, into the soul, it's in the other soul side of her.
I just wonder. They always found out that one. See, I thought Wayne's house, Wayne did drugs. They were just spending it out. Yeah, I had a lot of right over there. We stopped there and let's talk on the street. Cause we were, he was asking there, do they have any old high obrins down there for farming? And that's.
Cool hat.
Did he say what? Hi, how are you?
Becky said she's having her own money sale, but that, remember? And Meg makes all the things, girl, cause the whole month.
Yeah.
Up the last couple of cents.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Have you been walking your dogs?
Not really.
Cause I haven't seen them.
I did today.
Did you? I missed you. Must've been, maybe I was out in the market.
Was she down by the house?
They get away between your neighbor and your field, I'm like this.
Right?
I don't know which one, which one was.
What?
Huh?
All that brush behind his house?
Yeah, he's got, most of it tore out, but it's all laying, laying there, and there's a bunch of mud and stuff over in the road. They all said he could at least swept the mud back up in the dark. But there's still a whole lot to brush, but he's got a thing in there and he's tearing it all out.
He said it'd be here tonight.
He's, I think he's leaving the big trees though. But I think he says, tear them all that brush out. I mean, it looks nice back there where we, where we've got it all tore out.
Yeah.
He looks to wait your dinner.
Hi, how are you?
Yeah, I'm a little bit. One day, yes, and one day no.
Yeah.
Single area.
Seems strange, just you, you set them on that side, it's in this side.
You want some of this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna get them, cause we got another.
So you had to make a room.
Right.
Hello. I'm trying to get my, my rabbits to be put in.
Yeah, why?
Trying to get my rabbits to be put in. I told you the same page yesterday, but he was like, she was too much. I don't, I don't even. I'm not supposed to do that if I'm trying to be, you know? Oh, 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 I can see that.
Yeah, we've got the same spot that you have.
No, cause she's gonna be jamming around the circle, yeah. But now we got permanent spots, so we're wanting permanent spots. It's a nice one.
All right, folks, thank you for coming. So we're gonna put two meetings into one tonight. We've got a special meeting for the, it's Ordinance 2025 for the sewer systems. It's an upgrade in one of our. Yeah. One of our sewer pavements. So what I wanna do now, when it's, uh. This is called a meeting in order.
I say.
Sorry, folks.
No, it's the roll call.
Well, we have two papers here, so I wanna do, one's kind of hooked up at the same time. And I have to start a roll call.
Probably honor here. And then a local present.
Call the lawyer present. So third thing on the agenda is a public hearing for the sewer rate increase. I wanna actually read out what the lawyer wrote. Says, good evening, you're welcome. So I call this meeting to the town council of the town of Cunito, Indiana's order. The first, the first order of business tonight is conduct a public hearing. The town posted a notice of its public hearing at the town hall and published it in the newspaper and sent it directly to all users of the sewer works for service and property located outside of the town. Good. So at the town council last meeting, it's a council introduced Ordinance 2025 dash two. Council reviewed the rate report provided by the town accountant, financial solution group, dated February 7th, 2025. After re, after reviewing that rate report, we agreed that the existing monthly wastewater fees and charges are not enough to allow the town to properly operate and maintain its wastewater system and safeguard the health and well-being of the property of the town and provide for necessary upgrades and improvements to the system. Ordinance 2025 dash two is adopted, if adopted, would raise the monthly fee charges from the sewer service in three different phases over the course of 2025 to 2027, which is the first phase is from 65 to 72, is a five dollar increase. The second phase would come in 26, which would be a six dollar increase, would go from 72 to 78. And the third phase would come in 2027, it would increase by seven dollars to go from 78 to 85 dollars a month. Right? So. I've read this a little bit. After the plumbing hearing, council may take an action, take action on Ordinance 2025 dash two as it is written in ordinance amended. We will get to everyone who wishes to speak and present materials. Please keep your remarks as brief as possible, sir. Everyone who wants to speak may do so. Please also keep your remarks to the topic of the hearing and be considerate of, and be considerate of others. To begin, state your name and address for the record. Right here, let me check that, council will now open the floor for in comments from the persons interested or is affected by the proposal, proposed ordinance. So we open the floor to you guys about this proposal ordinance hike. Is there any concerns, questions? Who's doing the, uh, who has the contract? John Potter, 1019 West Washington Street. Who's got the contract to maintain the sewer system? The contract? The sewer system right now is, it's through, I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask Tom. I couldn't even tell you. Do we have a contract for our sewer system? I, I think it's out of Lynn Grove, and I don't know if we've got a contract or not. Start with treasure, though.
A, a contract for.
That guarantees, tells us what our rates are, what their hours are, what's emergency service, what's our response time?
Uh, we probably don't have something with all that, but like this ordinance, whatever, about the rates and.
But shouldn't we have a contract who's doing service on our sewer system? So we have guarantees?
I would have to check into that.
Right now, I mean, we got.
On air and, um, um, Lynn Grove, and there's one other one we use.
Do we have contracts?
I don't know, but I would, I would say we probably have some.
I could check into that.
Okay. I'm aware that we've had multiple failures for a while here. What's our preventive maintenance plan? What are we doing to be preventative instead of reactive, let's be proactive? It's, uh, we got Tom, our maintenance guy, Tom, our maintenance guy, he actually, and again, it's, it's not feasible to actually pull the pumps up and check them out, you know, cause then we're shutting people down, so. Wouldn't that be proactive, though, to find a problem before? It is, I agree with you. But what happens when one goes, when one stops working or one plugged up, they are, it does send us the red light, which actually, none of them so far has actually went out on the first red light. It's always been multiple, multiple red lights before a pump goes out. So what Tom's been doing is when he pulls them up, he will actually check them out, clean them out, or have the cabin even rebuilt if necessary before they go completely bad. So I know we do do that, but as far as the contract, no, it's all up to Tom. I, I just, it's my opinion that this is too much of a rate increase, and I believe we haven't, as a town, the council, whoever, we haven't been maintaining this or being proactive in our sewer system. This is, it's been left to go run on its own, nobody's been proactive. We've known about this for how many years? I gotta agree with you. So I'm against it. I think something else should be done before we go and jam everybody with a huge, we're, we're not rich people here.
I thought you were.
She is, I'm not. Just, uh. So thank you. We're welcome. The rate hike is sold. It's, uh, to actually add to what John had to say, that he's against it. It's, uh, it goes up five dollars, six dollars, and seven dollars in a three-year period. You know, at the end of the three years, it's saving five dollars, so it's twenty dollars higher than what it is now. Twenty dollars is a lot of money to some people. You know, and, uh. I don't, as of right now, you know, that's again, what's the meetings for tonight, so we can get everybody's input on what they think. And John's got some good ones, I mean, you know, so we, we need to go in there, we need to talk to Tom, and maybe even get Lynn Grove out here, so we can actually do a preventive maintenance. You know, pull the pumps, lift them out.
Because every month, they come twice a month to do a regular check.
What?
They're checking to make sure the pumps are working okay and all that.
Now, down at Sewer Plan itself, they actually go in, they change builders, they check the air pump and all that. They do a preventive maintenance down there, cause everything's out and old for the most part. Here, all the pumps are in ground, you know, so it's harder for them to do it. But you know, it's, uh, it's something we can definitely look at, so you can write that down. It's something we can definitely look at, we can get ahold of them and see if we can maybe improve what we got already.
Well, isn't that what Tom proposed? Cause we do need new pumps.
Yeah.
They're old. So I thought that's kind of what we talked about, and he was already gonna go ahead and replace like everything for them.
Well, this is not only just to replace them, yeah, because they need replaced.
Because they're old and they are, yeah.
But we're still also lacking over about fifty grand to finish up.
Right.
So my suggestion would be, from what I've researched, we can loan money from the general fund to the sewer account. Technically, we can take the extra money that we needed from the sewer payments and pay that yearly back to the general fund until that amount was paid off. Or we can actually give money to the sewer account and not have it be paid back. But I mean, if you look at roughly seven hundred dollars more a month is what this is gonna take in. I mean, it's not gonna put us that much farther ahead, and it's not gonna solve the problem of the failing equipment that we know is from the late nineties, and I mean, we've watched over the past year of issues, and so we have enough, how much, that thirty thousand that we moved? We were able to move money from Trust Indiana, that interest.
We're up on that, we've, I'm a five W sewer account now, like, they're moving. So we're also taking an interest from Trust Indiana.
He was doing four of five of them, is what we. Right, so that does, we have another at least ten, how many are there?
Eighteen or fourteen.
Eighteen, totally.
I mean, so overall, if we went ahead and did the maintenance upfront, we would save money in the long run because we wouldn't have after-hour calls or multiple service calls. I mean, it's always something for us to discuss later, that that would help immensely, and then with the more money coming in for the sewer payment, we're not gonna find ourselves quite in this situation. But one of those pumps that was worked on over behind, on 218, that bill came out to twelve thousand dollars. I mean, so if we had two or three of those go bad to that amount, that goes our sewer account again. And that doesn't include any problems out that way.
And some of these pumps too, when you pull them out to replace them, some of these is still in good enough shape because we've replaced them over the last few years that we can actually rebuild. You know, so we can keep them for rebuilding instead of just tossing them and replacing new ones.
Well, I think Tom said also they would take any parts that were good and put them somewhere.
As back out, yeah.
Kelly, that's a company. Kelly Rush, that's either zero seven ID, Fourth and Street. I'm for the rate. I think it's been long overdue because of the pump failures. But it's not only because of their old. If people would quit putting stuff down, that's the majority, that's ninety percent of it. Get your kid or whoever's putting stuff down. I don't see how some of this stuff that they pull out and even gets down through the toilet, I really don't. That's where all your money is coming from, you're gonna have to go to.
That's the major.
If you're gonna stay or doing that, because Tom's did a good job at, he keeps them going, and he, he checks them, I mean, he does maintenance.
He does it all the time.
But I think the town needs to take responsibility to help out and make sure that, you know, cause you can't. Along there, you can tell who's doing it and they can be charged for it. In town here, they can't pinpoint to which house is doing it. Steve's complained about that for a long time. There's just no way, you can't, you can't tell. But when he gets down in that big pump by the moms, yeah, it's a big, big, or he'll pull them, I've watched them pull it, and it's not fun. And then, you know, if they're not cleaned off and it's got kicked on stuff, that don't help matters, they gotta deal with all that. That's just a natural thing. But I'm for it, and like I say, I think it's been overdue, we, because there is people paying over a hundred dollars right now.
Everybody around us is paying.
Yeah, there's a lady at work and she wasn't gonna pay a hundred and nineteen bill because she wasn't hooked up yet. Well, you have to hook, you have to start paying that to get it built up so they can finish doing it. We're only paying sixty-five. That's pretty good, so even if we have to go to eight hundred dollars, yeah, I'm okay with that. We spend enough money on pop and sand and everything else and we can go for a major thing like this.
Well, I'm twenty dollars a month over the, by 2027. Like I said, it's not a lot of money, but it is gonna actually help repair costs. And not only that too, so I agree with you too, that we need to, the peoples doing it, we need to hit them, hit them hard. I mean, all, no, this came from you, we can prove it, this is what it's gonna cost you.
The ones we can't prove were just stuck with the bill because they put stuff down, so we have to have it repaired. So the money's gotta come from somewhere, so that means all of us have to help pay because of their.
Exactly. Good comments. So it's, uh, anybody else?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Dan Moxel, Fourth and Seventh East Main Street. Okay, so like, if, to do all those maintenance fees, aren't we gonna have to pay Lynn Grove a bunch of money to come out here?
We do.
And lift all those pumps up and stuff?
Yeah, all that comes from the town right now, our budget.
So, I mean, in the long run, it's really not, I don't think would be saving us any money because we're still gonna be paying out a whole bunch of maintenance money. I, I'm with Kelly, I'm for the rate.
Yeah, it's gonna give us more money to actually help cover the costs.
Yeah, I'm with Kelly, I'm for the rate, so.
But with new pumps, then you should have them in repairs.
Right, yeah.
And we have two accounts, the sewer system has its own money, and then the general account has its own money. So, you know, if we keep building up, you know, we can take care of some of that.
Anybody else got any questions on that? All right, so our next, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move on then. We're gonna start our regular monthly meeting. At seven fifteen. So I'm not buying a lot quicker than I thought of it. It's, uh, all right, so we're gonna approve the March minutes, make a motion to approve the March minutes.
Make a motion to approve the motion.
All right, now we're gonna hold. Oh, yeah, let's make a vote for.
I was saying, we're in the long term.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, now we're gonna move on to old business, category five. So our first one is Ordinance 2025 dash two, that we presented last month. It didn't sound like a lot of people had a lot to say about it. So what we're gonna do now, we're gonna ask for a motion to approve that ordinance 2025 dash two. Before you ladies got to.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty.
Twenty twenty-five dash two.
Twenty twenty-five dash two. Just second.
Now, let's take a vote on it, it's all approved.
Aye.
All right.
I'm ready to sign, man.
And this will start, I believe, next month, right? So you're gonna see a five dollar increase next month.
Are you in favor of this?
Excuse me, is it gonna be five dollars or seven dollars?
It's five dollars the first year, six dollars the second year, and seven dollars the third.
Seventy-two, seventy-seven.
Right.
Yeah. Sixty-five and seventy-two.
Oh, yeah, sixty-five to seventy-two.
Yeah, it's seven dollars.
Do the math.
Yeah, seventy-two, seventy-eight, eighty-five. Okay, the video recording, we're gonna move on to the old business, video recordings. We did get two estimates, we only got one in-house. We got one from, uh, Bluffton, City of Bluffton through, uh, uh, it was.
Skiles.
Skiles. That he told me that he'd have it here today. Did you check the box when you came in tonight? Can we check that real quick?
Yeah, I saw it.
Huh?
Yeah.
He told me if he didn't send it to me through email, he'd send it to me to the outside box. What this is, is actually to, we gotta go live by July of 2025 anyway, so we're trying to be proactive and get all this done beforehand. It's, uh, so we're having somebody in and put a professional in. That way they're, you know, it's, it should last for years, I would hope. So whilst you look at that, we do got one from Innovative Concept, I'll be catered. Nope. All right, so this is for, he gave us two different quotes, actually for a monitor. So both of them are gonna have a monitor, and the monitor's gonna sit back here, the camera's gonna sit back there, wherever he can position it, cause it's a wide angle lens. This is Innovative Concept.
Moving camera.
Yes. It's gonna have two speaker systems with it, through, through innovative, so we can do it two ways. We can have one, the big round one, coming off, uh, on the other side of this light, and it comes up, and it's, it's noise detection to where actually it would detect noise in all ways around it. You know, so if, if I'm talking, it's gonna pinpoint me, if you're talking, it's gonna pinpoint you and vice versa. You know, so he said it's top of the line, you know, but one of the cheaper versions also. It's, uh, what we found out, that there's no electrical out here whatsoever. So there's no outlets nowhere out here, so we gotta actually run, yeah, we gotta run power outlet from here over to where we're, we're hanging the camera and the mic. You know, we got another situation, it's a little bit cheaper, by two hundred dollars, we just put a mic here on the end of the table. You know, it's, uh, it's a two hundred dollars cheaper, and it's, uh, it's still good to pick up everybody, it's only distorted, and it's not like the, the one hanging, he's, uh. It's, uh, it comes with all the hookup, all the hardware we needed. It's, uh. Let me get to the bottom dollar here. And this guy here can have it done within a couple of weeks after we approve it. You know, we just call, call. And the total cost on this one right here, which I'm telling you already, it's, uh, the one that we're waiting for, is pretty much twice as hot, this, as much. This one here is five thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars complete.
And this company will do all the electrical work, we're Stiles out of Bluffton. When I met with that technician down here, he said that we have to hire a technician, electric, cause he will not run it from the office, that's where the router is, so they have to help all the wiring through this out to here, and then he said that they will do that.
And we had to actually get in the office, actually, I was gone on this proposal, and then he actually came back and proposed it again, so on Friday, and he brought this along with him on Friday. But, uh. There's two different ways in here, one, one of them's fifty-two hundred, one of them's fifty-four hundred, and that's without the mic.
Did you hear the price from Stiles?
No, we didn't.
That's, that's what we're waiting on now.
He kinda gave me a little ballpark. Ballpark.
But he's, maybe there'll be more.
It's seven, seven to ten, somewhere in that range.
And what about like, uh, recording the meetings and everything?
That's, that's all, that's all right in there with it, everything comes with it on both places.
They'll be, they'll be set up back here.
And so we gotta run wires from the inside of your office.
Show you how to do it.
Yeah.
And then they will come back and, um, set up. And then they will come back and, um, set up the YouTube and ensure that we can get that following before.
Stylus will do that. Stylus will do that, or any of this will do that.
Yes.
Um, either one.
Both of them.
We was hoping to have the other quote so that we could go ahead and vote on it tonight, but.
Well, I, I think that we still can. Because I'd like to make the motion to go ahead and vote for, uh, petition motion to InnovativeConcept, InnovativeConcept.
If I may, I want to have some six trees on it. I just sit and wait, if y'all don't mind, because working from memory isn't always the best way. Have something written to show exactly what the other company would offer.
Oh, yes.
This is my opinion.
Yeah.
Agreed.
I think we actually have to have two quotes.
I think.
But, uh, I don't know why we didn't have a quote tonight already.
Yeah, he told me.
But we've been waiting, okay, so this is, this is April, so May, we still got time. So we can, we can table it until next month.
It was Ricky who, uh, that came out from Stylus and he said they are so far behind. And I asked him if he could get it done in two weeks for a quote. And he said he would try. And then Paul called him and they said they have it here today, but, um, he said they just did a little wrong with doing it, you know?
Both of them do it a lot in a small town, you've seen Indiana, Ohio.
Sure.
Every place.
Is it only those two?
Yeah.
Well, there's others.
What about IPI in Bluffton? Have you even got touch with them?
No.
Maybe I'll call and see if they do it. Let's see. Because they're the ones who we are contacted with. They save our stuff in the cloud for the, our bookwork and everything.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't even know what IPI is. I've been looking at another, you know, actually install videos and stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't know for sure.
Would these proposals be available for us to look at? I am familiar with this technology.
Uh, I mean, uh, once we get a proposal, I mean, it is, it is, uh...
That book is.
It is more or less found properly. You know, now I don't know, yes, this is it.
That is a proposal right there.
But, uh...
I'm not trying to bash it.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying, if you want to look at it, you're more than welcome to. I don't care.
Oh, yeah, I just, I am familiar with audio and video and all that cool stuff.
Alright, so what we do, we put you call. ITM?
ITM.
And we have CF, uh, CF, uh, Skiles and Donald, whatever they sent us the quotes that he said he took. Alright, let's move on to part C of old business. It'd be as the storm basin quote. Alright, we got, we got one that's completely busted apart. That actually needs, uh, fixed. And that's right there in front of John and Young A's house, right on the corner.
Renters.
Yeah, renters. But, uh, we picked that, we picked that up and the, the bricks is, I mean, we actually put a few of the bricks back. Because it's completely gone. And that's one of the ones, there's two of them in town. That's, that's one of the two that's in town, it's left. That's not concrete. So it's still got the old style brick, another red brick. Alright, so in, in order to do that there and touch up some of the other ones and even actually touch up the storm basin down by, right on the curb where, uh, it's, uh, Terry Masterson lives. What's happening, they're running over it so much, people cutting, cutting short, running over it. That one side of it is actually getting ready to break and it's concrete also. So what he's going to do, he's going to bring us and, he's going to dig it out a little bit bring us some concrete and kind of build that back up. So if they do run over it, that they're actually running over concrete instead of running into the mud and all that stuff. Alright, so the price on that, the storm basin is six thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Now what that is, I wish Tom was here. What, the new style of doing this, you dig this out and you put like a, a drum in there. It's like, it's, it's, it's some like a catch basin, but you put it in vertical. And that's what, that's what it is now.
This being included in my damn Travis Mounters house, but.
That one there, all that one needed is cleaned up.
Okay.
You see, all storm, all storm basins are actually at the level they need to be. You can't raise any of them up. Because that's where they got to be for the water to run off correctly. What happened over time, it's, uh, his property raised up, the storm basin's down. You know, then when he's pouring it in his driveway, it's just, over the years, it's, it's just raised up. So the storm basin has got to stay where they're at. I think, uh, I think I talked to Steve about that one time before. That we can't raise them. Okay, so we got it. And again, the next one that does our work for that, he's, he's been doing it now for a while. He, he does actually work, actually good work. And then, uh, that's sixty-nine, sixty-two.
Fifty cents.
Yep, and fifty cents. And this is something that we, you know, you know whether we got the money to do this or not. I mean, if you're telling me we do, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to, to approve this. You know, so.
We have several areas we could take that from. Maybe local road and street, often check on that. We don't spend that money.
Okay.
So maybe we should have that money budgeted for.
Well, it's something that needs to be done, probably sooner than later. Because like I said, that one there, it sticks out in the road and people do run over it. So it's making it even weirder. Alright, so I would actually make a motion to, uh, to get this started and get it in works, to approve this.
I'll say that.
Alright. Just, uh, make a motion to vote on it. To, to approve. It's, uh, Scott May Slon here, Road Service, and whatever else he does, everything. It's, uh, for the base of repair.
Aye.
Alright. Alright. So... Keys to office, we're going to move that up down, move to D. We tabled this last month to actually do this month. Okay, so we couldn't really make up our mind the last month whether we, we wanted to do what we made a motion on years ago to turn in all the keys to the office. So, but then again, we ran into a situation with both these guys, Stiles and with, uh, this Concept guys. So I was out of town, Linda had her keys, so Linda actually, and she had to get in the office. So I think, so I'd like to make a motion to actually reconsider or, or just to keep our keys. Everybody keep the keys, make sure what you need in, in the office is locked up, make sure it's locked up.
Well, Kelly, you had spoken with, um, someone from A, was it?
Joe Tomer and the town attorney at one time told me that it is very not normal for everybody to have keys for the office, that you are in charge of what is behind that door and that it is unusual.
Of all the audience, got their keys. Every member's got a key to the office.
That's one of the key to the office.
Even the police commissioner.
To the foot type of office.
I guess they only got one office, is the way I understand it. But as, as of right now, it's, uh, I know our, our motion years ago was everybody was taking the keys away from everybody except the president and, and the clerk treasurer.
And Tom.
And Tom. You know, but, uh, again, what's the purpose of taking the keys? You know, if, if you're going and I'm going, somebody needs to be in, somebody else needs to have a key.
Why might anyone need to, I mean, no one needs to be in my office.
They had to get in there to see where the router was, to see what they had to do to run out here. Both of them.
Yeah, so.
And I was around, I mean, so I could have, I mean, I need to stay around.
And you're usually either here or there in the post office, so.
Anyway, I'd like to see if all keep our keys. I mean, I don't know what the, the big deal is.
Kelly, I'm going to turn hers in.
Well, that's, that's up to each individual, you know, if they want to turn them in or not. But I think I, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we all keep our keys. If I'm going, you're going, she's going, then Kelly's got, well, if Kelly turns her in, you know, Tom's, somebody had to get a whole town. I'm flying out tonight, I'll be gone for two weeks. So, somebody else needs to have a key.
Tom has one. We can cut that though, I mean.
Wouldn't be probably in the best of his interest to have to drive over here to let somebody in if they need it in there though, when we're right here.
Anyway, I'd, I'd make a motion that, that we all keep our keys. And if you don't want to keep them, throw them in.
Linda just seconded that.
Yes, I did.
Bill, on it?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, so now we're going to move on to new business.
Excuse me, Paul. Yeah? Do you need to get with these people? There's no storage device in here, I can see?
It's, uh, it's got one terabyte, is what you've told me.
I didn't see it anywhere in there.
Well, yeah. I'll, I'll ask him, but yeah, he, he told me it had one terabyte.
Okay.
But yeah, I'll, I'll definitely ask him.
I don't think the price is unreasonable.
Yeah. I'll definitely get ahold of them. Yeah, because we got to have storage, not need to, so we're mandatory to keep up to three months.
Yeah, I just didn't see a physical, you know, BBR or something like that, or a network storage device.
Well, good catch, yeah, I'll definitely get ahold of them. Alright, so, uh, we're moving on down to... Yeah, Wells County Cleanup Day. So on that, a new business. Does everybody probably got one of these in the mail? And I hope a lot of people over here in town uses it. It's, uh, because as of right now, we don't have a cleanup date posted. I said, I know we talked about it, but, uh, it depends on just how well this here works. Sort of petroleum, it's not that far away, whether we need to or not.
What day is it?
It's the twenty-sixth, April twenty-sixth between nine, nine AM and two PM. It's located at the thirty-two twenty-sixth East Second Street, petroleum in the end at the church.
Yeah, I'm wondering about that.
All the tires, metal, everything, I take everything.
I'm taking a load of tires, so if anybody's got some, I've got, I think, ten I'm taking over there, so if you got some tires, I can throw them back in my truck until it's full. It's free.
Yeah, it's all free.
One thing nice about it, over there, the county takes for the dumpsters. And they fill one, they have three sitting there, and then they fill one, bring another one all day long. Where when we put the dumpster out here, we have to pay for it. But I was told that we shouldn't have to. If we went to the county, they should take care of it if we do have a cleanup day. And another thing, um, while we're on this cleanup day, um, in Bluffton, they're having their shredder day on May the third from nine eleven. And then on June the fourteenth, they have the hazardous, uh, material cleanup. And that is from eight to one. Where's that at? The shredder, they're down at the school.
That's not where it usually is.
No.
It's in that parking lot. Crossing the lane.
Are you sure?
It's crossing the lane in that parking lot, that's where.
Yeah, yeah. By the launcher, I think.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Used to go there.
What time was that shredder? The shredder is from nine to eleven.
Alright, so still new business, we'll move down to section B, attorney fees. I asked Lumen to put that on there, I just happened to go through, uh, our attorney fees. And, uh, what we paid since the first of the year. I don't even know if I'm looking at this right, so I wanted to exclude in on these. When it's on general, say like, say like right here, the general of January.
Yeah.
Okay, that means what we paid in January for the general and sewer for January, what we paid in sewer for just for... And it's all attorney fees that we've actually talked to him about, correct? The attorney fees.
Well, if it says HR, HRG attorney, it's not an attorney fees.
Okay. So what I got, now I know that we have a lot of spend again, but just this, this year here alone, just January, February, March, we paid seventy-five hundred dollars for the attorney fees. Seven thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
That is probably true because.
Because that's a lot of money.
But we don't have a budget for six thousand, don't we?
We paid five thousand twenty-nine to the attorney in the sewer and that is not included in the budget. The sewer, uh, is not budgeted. Uh, in the general, we have spent one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. And yes, we have six thousand.
And that's for our budget at four?
We have six thousand appropriated, yes. So we still have four thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the general attorney that we can spend. And we'll be spending some of that because, you know, with all these fees, with the, uh, property we're acquiring and, um, and of course with sewer, the rate increased and everything.
Well, the, the property we're acquiring and the sewer increased, just so I know. I mean, he'd already done that, right? So the increase.
Uh, there may still be some bigger work with the property we're acquiring.
Okay.
Because that's still in the process.
Right, because the way with the property down here, you guys know what property we're talking about? The side that's, uh, merged.
Right, in the corner of Porch, you can, and Meridian, where the old Sullivan house used to be.
So it was upper tax sale for what, four hundred and eighty, four hundred dollars, something like that?
Four sixteen and a half.
The town did.
Well, actually, the, uh, the commissioners are giving it to us. There may be a small fee that we have to pay. But I've been in touch with the county commissioners and because it's been up for tax sale like two times now and no one's purchased it, so they can give us the town.
Okay, we just want to make sure that we don't got five thousand dollars to lawyer fees by, by, by getting it, right?
No, they said they got five thousand dollars in lawyer fees.
Yeah, I was adding all these up and I just couldn't, I, I may have told us a bit, but I was going to ask you direct.
So I have included, you're saying on the sewer, that six thousand that we have budgeted is not included in that.
Correct.
So, we pay, like this one right here is, um, one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars in the sewer account for March. So that money comes out of the sewer account?
Alright, well now I understand it. Alright, so let's move on to new business. It's, uh, I got down with a letter from attorney. It's, uh, I just want to table that till one, until May. So I'd like to make a motion to table that letter from the attorney till May. Now you got it with me?
I have a copy.
Okay, okay, if she got a copy.
Yeah, I mean, but this is similar, because that and I'm going to do with the town.
Oh, the one I got came from the town.
No.
Oh, I mean, it's addressed to the town.
No, it says your name on it.
Yeah, but it was addressed to the Canida Town Hall.
And it says care of all other council members, so just the way it goes, this is not town business.
Alright, well, we, we're going to just table it until Monday, until May.
I have requested retraction, it was supposed to happen at the beginning of the meeting and I did not proceed with it.
You didn't want them? Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, that wouldn't have happened. Okay, and what she's talking about, just so you guys all in the... So, I don't have it with me, but she wants to verbally apologize, she wants me to verbally apologize to her town council meeting and put in the Wells County newspaper that I lied and that I apologized. That, uh, for what, what I said to me before. That she had, and again, I don't want to get into all that again, but, uh, my name was smeared along with Linda's. Yeah, like we're having a fair or something. You know, she's always hanging on me, she's always doing this, so it's not true at all. So I, I just pinpointed out, make sure the town knew that one's true.
That I created a video clip and sent it around, which I did not. So that's good, I'm asking for the clarification, so, yeah, we can move on.
Yep. Alright, so now the alley between eighty and ninety, uh, East Washington Street. Okay, I got the estimate from you. It's got many again. What we need to do is the back half of the alley, if not all of it. So what we're, he's proposing is taking some of it. so what we're, he's proposing is taking some of the front half and taking at least maybe five or six inches out of the back half. So towards two eighteen, to get all the mud, all the hard, you know, until we get down to hard clay, repack it full of stone. And, and get rid of all the mud. So that proposal was two thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars.
You got something to say on that, if you don't mind?
No. Go ahead.
Uh, I believe in uh, previous meetings that I agreed to maintain the alley between eighty, not Mr. Sargent's. It was me that maintained, they agreed to maintain the alley. The alley has been graded in the last two days. The mud is going away and there's gravel on the way. Uh, it was brought to Paul's attention Saturday of, I believe, the get this straight here. Three twenty-three, twenty-five is brought to the attention that there is gravel on the way. And previously could not maintain it due to the weather and the mud and rain. There's just no way to maintain it. But I did agree to maintain the alley that has access to my home and access between houses. I don't see why the city would pay two thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars for someone to come in and grade. I've done uh, so now I would do, and it's done in the process. I've done, took two inches out of it and uh, there's more coming to re-throw our base and then we'll get some three inches overlay with forty-two inch rock. Uh, that's the access to my garage. My property line is about four foot from this alley, so I have no option but to use the alley to get in my garage or the backside of the parking area that I actually created to quit using the alley due to other issues I'd like to get into at the end of this meeting. But I did agree to maintain it. It's on record.
I also like to say during the, when the estimate was obtained of this alley that you're speaking of, you were violating the open door policy and that you were doing this on a Sunday afternoon, again harassing us, harassing me. When we've asked you to not trespass on our property.
The alley is put fits to town's property anyways.
Right, but harassment is harassment.
No, it's coming to my house. They were the harassment.
You can knock on it.
No, you can't. Not trespassing. You cannot trespass.
The police instructed them. I think we also
Have trespassing.
Recording of Paul threatening to cause harm to my husband over this event that we're speaking of.
Yeah, you're not having recorded that.
We do with your husband, with our neighbors, because we do. I'm happy to play the game now. Of you threatening to whip his ass when you catch him in Huntington. Absolutely, we do.
Okay.
Unethical, you're a member of, you're a, yeah, a public representative and you're threatening to cause harm to my husband because you don't like him? When you're performing this on a Sunday afternoon for your personal agenda.
It did not happen.
It did. I'm happy to play the record.
Did you record me saying that?
There's all recording.
No, you're right, no recording.
You're recording of your, of your threatening and threatening to cause harm to him. Very unethical, not professional as a city's representative.
You guys should have heard.
No, it's not.
We love everyone's.
We're not sitting here doing this tonight.
No, we're not.
It's a real problem. You're proposing to do something when you're causing threats to my home. That's a big problem for your own personal agenda because you don't like us. That is a big, big problem. You're a bully. You bully many people in this town because you feel that you can, and it's not okay as a public representative.
Yes, it is.
It's very true. I'm happy to play the recording. I think everyone will agree.
Play it.
Please play it. I'm just tired of being bullied and I don't understand why the town.
If you want, I'll keep close of the recording device.
I also don't think there would be any issues with my neighbor if Paul hadn't involved himself in the first place.
That would have told you guys.
At that point, at that point, I ask you to resign tonight.
Mm-hmm.
I will out this board.
I would like, I would like to say, um, just listen, that, that's totally inappropriate for a public member of
Yeah.
A public elected official.
Alright, my recording was when I sat back there with Scott Minnick, and Scott Minnick was there with me because I thought, me and Scott was gonna go to the place, place station. I got threatened myself. I told him what, what, again, he didn't play at all, and that didn't happen to his house. That happened way outside of his house because he was still running his mouth. Like they're official.
That was one call with Aaron Short.
You're a bully, sir. You do this to everyone in town. I've heard multiple complaints about the harassment and what you do for your own personal agenda as an elected official. You've threatened my husband. You've been threatening at my home. I've asked you to not come back. You continue to do so at opportunities you know that he's not there. You know that it's just me.
I knocked on the door, you answered it. I, I've done it.
I'm asking that you resign, I'm asking that you resign from this board tonight.
You can ask all you want.
Okay, that's fine.
So, did you threaten me?
No.
No, we never had, we just asked to be left alone.
Yep. And asked to not show up at my house on Sunday afternoon to conduct business. Open door policy with the contractor and then with another board member as well. That's open door policy. If no one's familiar with that, you can look up the law. It's violation. It's a fine. It's not an open door policy.
I got Linda down there just.
And that's two council members together.
We did not make any decisions whatsoever.
The police were there. They bought this oval and came back to patrol our property. That's very much so.
I have one, I have one question. Were you trespassed? Did he trespass you?
Yes, he did. And I told him.
Did you return after you were trespassed?
No.
Yes, he didn't.
No, 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 he didn't.
Personally trespassed, yes, not by the sheriff.
I asked him, Paul, I seconded it, just to calm things down. I seconded it. I asked for your removal too. At least start making steps to revise it and take another step to put someone else in the position and maybe stepped off the board. It's just too, it's too much. There's just too much.
I would.
There's too much personal. It doesn't matter. It's just too much. And then you make comments like that, that's not something. To make comments like that, that's not something that a, a board member, the way you should appropriate. I don't care who you're talking to. You are handling.
I got threatened so bad.
I would like to hear that.
I got threatened so bad. You know, you gonna lie about it? Please, please ask for the.
Threatened. I just, I just. Sir, because I have to cry. I have called the police. I asked you quit coming to my home and you continue to do so. So please ask me how I have at all been threatened. I know he has threatened you. If you come back on our home, then it won't be good.
I told you.
That I do know because we're tired of you coming on our property for your own personal agenda.
Why are we doing town business on a Sunday?
That's when he did a due to appraisal. I mean, you know what? It's not even that. He did the appraisal. I went down there, showed him what I want. I had no clue all this was gonna happen.
But you, you and Linda went together. Wasn't.
No, we didn't go together first. I went, I went down, I wanted to get her. I wanted to make sure she went with me.
But now it's town business. The two of you together dealing with town issues is town business.
It's the appearance. And appearance is everything when you're in a public position. The appearance that you present to this town is everything. And if you have two people from the board members show up to a resident's home, regardless what day it is, it appears that
She did not show up to the resident's home. I would not have to do that. I asked you.
I'm saying, what I'm saying is
I've been on town property the whole time.
Right, but if, but if you both show up, it, it makes the appearance, not just to their folks, but to, to other folks, that there's something going on with the town, and appearance is so important when you're a public official. And the appearance is inappropriate. From what I'm hearing and from what I'm saying, you know, it appears probably inappropriate.
And the minutes were heard and say the alley will be tabled till the next thing about moving forward.
Because, because we didn't have a, he was supposed to have me to estimate, remember? So we had to actually table it.
Well, as far as that being done, we've already done the work. I was just getting the twenty-five hundred dollars stolen. I gave a ticket.
Yeah, you take the money. This is stupid.
I just feel like as a person for the community, I'd like to be a part of that money if we spent elsewhere. It seems like we need it in a lot of places for our city as a whole, not just the alleyway.
We may be a small town, but we still have a wide law.
Again, I'm, I'm speaking for the town, whether anybody was listed or not. Okay, we cannot actually have a homeowner doing that extensive work in, on a piece of town property. I did it for twenty years, you know, because what, what happens, what happens.
I did it for twenty years right here.
Alright, so, so right, right now, it's a legal thing too. It's a legal thing too, I would think. Now, okay, so what if somebody goes there and gets completely stuck? I mean, if it's town, if it's town property, you could, town take care of it. It's a town issue.
Okay, then so if I go in the alleyways, what's considered an alley, and I get stuck with any alley in this town, right, that would be considered that, is that not? Am I correct? You're the town. So, if I go down an alley that is not properly maintained in this town and I get stuck, what you're saying is the, the city would be responsible for that? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that whoever's at the homeowner would just take care of town property.
What you do every day when you got people mowing. We shovel our sidewalks, right? Yeah. That's.
I know you're maintaining, you're no party science in part of your house.
With no safety organs.
Yeah, I know that's the main thing.
This argument is weak. Because I maintained that alley for twenty plus years, puts tons and tons of stone, and then one day on when, this was some other time, they decided to do the, fine, that's fine.
Well, we, we said that we'd get an estimate. We got an estimate. So, there's three people on the board.
I just.
So, we got an estimate to, to maintain every alley in the town? I, I'd like to set a motion to have estimate as a citizen of this town to have every alley properly maintained.
Is that, why would, why would we? But it seems very personalized for another agenda. My bigger concern is that I'm being threatened by a board member.
You didn't get threatened. I rang your doorbell, you came to doorbell.
We all just listened to the video.
I told you I was gonna do it.
After every time I met you, I've asked you to not come. It's at the last time and the police will notify you.
He's right, though. Every single alley needs to be done if you're moving that close to the, yes, why? You get to pick and choose which alley is. Right, so that's a personal agenda at that point.
I just mean ours, ours is underwater. I mean, they could use a, a retaining pond there. I mean, what, three, four days when we get a flood?
That's a big issue.
Washing out that corner.
We've got, we have an alley ground down too that's proposing out the alley with mine. That's, that'd be another personal agenda. If I have to invite.
More importantly to me, more importantly to me, is that you step aside, and the reason why is I'm more afraid of lawsuits against the town for you being asked to stay off and you continually go on.
That didn't happen.
When you could send Linda by herself to address it.
Since I've been told to get off, and again, I don't know what you guys have been told, but it's not true.
I just heard.
Since I've been.
Yeah, inappropriate. I don't care. Inappropriate for a council member of the town that I live in. I prefer you to be asked to get off.
Hey, I, I'm a man. I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna say it off.
Yeah.
He's starting to sound like a threat to me.
I am, but I am now.
I told him he knows where I live. This didn't happen to his property? And there was no threats at all until after I got threatened.
A threat, you're, you're a public official.
At that point, I was not.
You're always a threat.
You're always a public official.
But in my mind, at that point, I was.
It doesn't matter, and you shouldn't be in that position.
Right.
Alright, so anyway, we gotta, I appreciate, again, back to your alley. That's a part of the, that other quote.
I'm not worried about it. We'll take care of it like we always do. Everything else back.
Well, there's a storm basically down there. It's been cleaned out. So hey, he's gotta clean that out.
So we just get aside and disregarded on the issue?
You what?
Where you're just deflecting from the issue that she's asking. What I'm asking.
We're asking you to step aside.
Threaten us. We did not threaten you other than the fourth time you were told not to come on our property with the officer present to not come back again, or there will be further issues.
I didn't.
That wasn't a threat. That was a fact.
The cop told me that, hey, he's got a trespassing ring. I never, I never went back.
The point is, though, you're deflecting from what we're talking about.
No, I'm not.
Sir, I'm being truthful. Are you gonna step down when citizens are asking you to do?
I mean, multiple people have, have talked about you bullying. They stopped coming to the town meetings because of it. It's not like they're for community council at all.
So you are refusing to step down?
I, I, yes, I.
Okay, you do, you, you are aware that what you have said is not only civil and
And criminal.
And criminal? Do you not understand that?
As a public official.
As a public official, you do understand that, that, that is criminal?
When they hear.
That there will be charges pressed. You do realize that, right?
Okay, do what you gotta do, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
Alright. Within, within, I will tell you, I'm building a new house out of nine hundred, so I will be stepping down. But.
No.
They got, not only, this is, this is just crazy. I will be stepping down, because I will be moving out of town. But that might take a year. Now, again, if uh, alright, we got more than one person in town, when we step down, hey, I'm more than glad to step down.
We absolutely can get a petition.
Right? I, I think, I think we can too, we can too. And again, it's uh, I think more than one of us needs to step down. It's uh, maybe, maybe that's what we need to talk about. So, again, I'll leave it up to you two. We gotta, we got, I did what we said we'd do, what we had voted that we'd do. And I got the estimate.
We do not vote on getting an estimate.
No, we actually made it, yeah, we didn't vote on it yet, because we got to vote on it until we actually got the estimate.
So, that estimate was done on Saturday, uh, Monday?
This was done, it says, uh, four eleven.
Four eleven? That estimate was done on four eleven?
Well, that's, that's when, that's when this is dated.
When, when, when was the physical estimate done on that contractor?
Uh, that date, you threatened me so bad.
No, okay. Well, we recorded ourselves too the whole time, so that's fine. We'll deal with that later.
So, so you wasn't down to conduct the city business when that was done, an estimate? And was it voted upon? That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get. We're, we're, y'all are a town board. You're supposed to be conducting city business and town business with all of us knowing. This is very unprofessional. That's where it cuts off at. It's not the chaos, all that, and, and the threat stuff, that's just a part of it, guys. They're not running the city board like it should be ran. This is very, very unprofessional. This right here, they're spending our tax dollars without us even knowing. Conducting city business on a Sunday. I don't know what contractor in the right line would go do an estimate on a Sunday afternoon.
He, he's our go-to guy for the town. That's going to take.
Well, they should give more than one estimate, because it requires two.
He, he's our guy. He's our guy that does all of our.
So, can we, can we get another estimate? Because I think two thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars is a little too high.
Yeah, we get another estimate.
I would like, I'd like another estimate. It has never voted on. We, we did that there. We conducted city business.
We get Randy to.
Alright, so.
Let you just take your room. Right here. Randy. First, that would be one if you did quote well.
But if they're gonna be somebody that does it for us every year, I'm back to, we need to get contracts with these people.
Well, there's supposed to be, there's supposed to be contracts on everything that was done. Remember when we did the pavilion and didn't get a contract? That was all on me. Linda didn't get a contract. I didn't know I was supposed to.
Well, I mean, we're supposed to have contracts like to Tom and anybody who guys.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree. We all got, this is, I'm, this is, we're, we're ordered to go.
And that was brought up after we did the pavilion when we didn't have a contract because of the conflict with Luann Pan. And that was brought up at a meeting that we had to have contracts. We have been signing full contracts, right? Didn't we sign, sign up any contracts?
You mean like the ornaments or something?
Yeah.
No, because it's statute, it's state law, we don't have policies or anything for that, it's, we can't write things that go above that, we're expected to do it, so we don't need a policy saying we have to have contracts, we have to, because the state says we have to.
But I probably need to check in to get like a blanket contract or something.
The attorney said before, back some time ago, that he had a blank.
Okay.
Different types of.
I will contact, I will contact him. Seems like even maybe the audit, they mentioned that we needed to have on the tongue, I don't think we do, so, that's something I need to double back on.
Consent these payers on our employee with a ten ninety-nine, is that how it's.
Ten ninety-nine, yes.
Alright, so let's go back. So what are we doing with this, then? We gotta wait and get another estimate. Okay.
What about doing the rest, what about doing the rest of the alleys too?
That's not what happened.
It seems.
It's biased.
A little bit.
Those, those alleys in town, it's not.
I think your, your town attorney would agree.
I did not want my alley behind my house, I'm sorry.
I don't want that for you either, ma'am, I don't want that for myself. I didn't, I couldn't look at my neighbors when this official represented the town. I think we would have had a different outcome.
No, it all started when you guys thought it would be a driveway as an alley, that's when it all started.
Right, and then as soon as I got it, there was no longer an issue.
It just seems odd that we're making a big deal over one piece of alley.
The town made a big deal over it.
The town made a big deal about it last year, I mean, this is.
It's been going on for over a year, year and a half, two years.
Over a fricking two hundred feet of alley already.
That no one even uses the back half but us.
I mean, yes, there was a conflict between neighbors.
I was guessing it.
That's why.
Some other people when they got involved, we probably could have got worked out.
So it was over a neighborhood conflict, or was it over emergency access to the alley, again? We're going back, you're just now saying it's over a neighborhood conflict, that's a civil issue that the town does not even get into, because for emergency access to the sewer is different, and that's where the conflict all began as well, is that Paul Miller stated in a meeting that it was due to neighborhood conflict, neighbor conflict. That is civil. What you have when you have emergency access to it, then you have to have emergency access to the hall. That would be a legal agenda to do it, but it doesn't make sense, it's very odd and biased.
But Kristen, didn't you come and complain about you and Eric?
About what?
The alley.
Yeah, and, and you're not even the homeowner for one. It's not, the property's not even in your name, so I'm not really sure why you always have to say so, and whatever goes on.
Because I didn't trust, that's why.
It's our home.
Yep. And I have all the rights to it.
I work, I pay for my home, and try to take care of it just like everyone else in their home. That was why that was brought up at the meeting, because resident Kristen brought it up about it, so that's how it all originated.
Parking in the alley, or what, what was the complaint, I wasn't here for that.
Parking in the alley.
Parking in the alley.
And it was our mistake to assume when we bought the home that it was the driveway, we didn't assume so, because it had been used that way for years.
I would say that's solved, right?
That they just wanted to be able to have access for their camper.
I parked at the back door of my property.
That's a negative issue, the point is, this is a way to grant the grassroots stuff that he's willing to do.
And, again, it goes to, I, I believe, again, this is my opinion, not just me. It seems like we're singling this one little section of alley out, when I walk around town, I know there's several other alleys that are grassed now, just like mine used to be. But all of a sudden.
Yeah, cause it was grassed.
Because they need access or something, that nobody's ever used it, so, but that's besides.
As a, as a town point, standpoint, we only, it's, it's always been open, the only reason why we want to be gravelled and put to, to park is because there was a conflict between the two neighbors, period.
It wasn't always open, there was a giant bush back there.
I actually trimmed it down.
Yeah, I know, but at the beginning of this, it was never open.
It was, it was still open, it was a bush, okay, the only bush is in a way, but as far as, in legal terms, it was, it never was a closed alley.
No.
So.
Well, we're the ones on the east end of town.
There's no alley, there's no. There's no alleys that's closed in this town, correct? Is all them open, open?
No, there is closed alleys in town, yes.
For what purpose?
Our was one, remember it got made activated.
No, no, it, it's always been open. For what purpose are they closed?
So the alleys have been closed, it's behind Hartman's, it's all that you truly owns now, it's actually on the backside of your property.
Okay, and that's the only alley?
Yes, the only alleys in town.
And they own that, though, correct?
They, they actually bought it off the lawyers, gave it to them, went to the legal lawyer, gave it to them, and the alley behind it's Hartman's, Sue Oswald, and whoever else back in there. You know, there's an alley that goes across the hill this way here, and it goes back.
And so that one's closed?
That's closed also.
Is there a sewer line going through there?
No, no. No.
Kelly, the one, like, you just, was it actually closed?
Where?
The one that you're talking about?
No, the one behind us, between us and Shar, it's an alley open, and the one that comes through to their house on the east side is, is an open alley, but I, we don't.
It looks very closed, as it should be, I mean, it's part of, in between, I don't know. It's not been accessed, yeah.
Well, after all this, I'll tell you guys now, I'm resigning. Thank you. And they got nothing to do with what you asked me to do, or whatever, but, like, this, this should be a lot easier. And for some reason, well, I got my own opinions, but anyway, I'm not a bully. Some of you guys think I am, or whatever else. What's being said over here is not necessarily completely the truth. Okay, it's, any man's gonna defend himself. And I will continue to defend myself, again, that's one of the reasons why I'm resigning. And not only that, this is just getting too much. There's ninety-three or less than a hundred houses in this town, there's no way this town board should be going through all this. You know, and, and just, it's just nuts. And I'm moving anyway. So sooner or later, I might resign anyway. And I don't need to hate. Right, so this, that's all about that, now Kelly Potter, we went back to new business to eat, Kelly Potter's got something.
No, I think I'm done.
Alright, so we're gonna move in comments from the public, I think that's what we just said.
I got a new one, babe. Um, when you said about the, the catch basins and everything else, I know we had a lot of rain, we've had a lot of rain before.
Exactly.
And everything else, but if you went around and looked at the sewer basins, the ones on our end of the town are all full and everything, and it takes forever, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Quite a while, but if you go on the west end of town, those are all empty. And if you look at the new one that they put in, where Jesse Bergman used to live, they put a catch basin there, it goes straight down in, if I understand you right, it goes straight down in the main tile. It was totally full, so we've got a major blockage somewhere.
Blockage on that side of the street.
We, we've got blockage there, to the other end, to where it goes, there's a blockage in there somewhere, cause the sewer line, the main sewer line goes behind Dorothy and over behind Adam's house.
Well, let me tell you something.
There is, there, there's a blockage between Bergman and First Street, yeah.
Okay, now, he did tell me, and again, it might be on that estimate, so many did tell me that when he comes out and turns his party, he will jet. What I'm getting at, you know, and he's the way he's ranked, he will jet it and push everything out. But what he's gotta do, he's gotta have a guy at every catch basin to make sure that when he's blowing out, it's not blowing back up.
I don't think it's a, I could be wrong, but I don't think it's a catch basin that's causing the issues, I think it's the main line.
It's, it's busted or something, well, he'll go and tell me.
Because, it's like Steve said, when you go on, is that First Street, Mary, that goes straight into, is that second? The one goes by the only, which of First or Second, first, you don't, you're.
Yeah, I'm saying, so that's First.
Okay, so First Street, because there's a dip there and everything else, that may not be broke down, but somewhere between Jesse Bergman and First Street, there's an issue somewhere, so it does need to be looked at and seen about and that.
Is that a tile, or are we responsible for the tiles, or is the county responsible?
In town, we're responsible.
We're responsible.
In the big county tile, they put it in, when we had our last flood, it used, all flooded up, we were going around and everything else, and they put a new one in, over on Meridian, and that, but we are responsible for taking care of it, if it breaks down, we have to fix it.
Okay, I'll take it.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not a expert on it.
They, they do before the town and after the Red Road, we, we have to take care of it to the Red Road.
So the storm drains, where are they tied in, where do they go? Where, where do they?
All the way to the ditch.
They do go all the way to the ditch.
All the way to Rock Creek.
On that end of town?
Yeah, that fifteen dollars we spend on taxes for Rock Creek.
Yeah. So are we gonna tell Manny to look into that? Are you gonna tell him about?
Oh, I will, yes, I'll, I'll tell him to actually look into it.
Sometime, yeah.
And then let him know that. Yeah. I, I'll tell you, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm making, I'm making movements. I'm gone for two weeks, so when I get back, I'm making moves to actually get out of here.
So are you going to send a letter of resignation?
Yeah, I will, I will.
To the county clerk, because we need to send it.
Yep, I know, I know who I gotta talk to, so I'll, I'm gonna do that, and I wish you guys the best. You know, because, yeah, this is.
Well, I.
Cause I, I'm on that end of town. I shouldn't say I don't care what happens to the towns, because I do, I've lived here my whole entire life. Never voted anybody in my life, and I never took no crap either of nobody. There's a difference.
Well, I did.
And, and maybe I'm not, uh, it's a board member material, because I will not stoop down, and I will not bunker down and, yeah, let somebody treat me that way or talk to me that way, so that's, it is what it is. Not only that, like I said, the main thing is I'm moving anyway, it's something that's gonna happen anyway this year. So, I'll take over right back.
So what do, what would we do next?
You guys would actually do the same thing you did, well, you know, when Rita and those guys went. You'd actually put, you'd ask, you'd ask around, you'd get.
No, we're Republican, has to go Republican caucus first.
Yeah, he's gotta go there first.
Let them know.
But we can't do that till the, they receive the letter of approval.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to sub debate.
So then, it goes through Republican caucus first, that didn't happen, and then overlap, whatever, you know, it's gotta, it's still gotta be somebody here in town.
The same process when Brad was a Democrat that went to caucus, didn't find anybody, came back to us.
So, I just wanna say that I really think that we need a man on the board, so anybody that is thinking about it, should think hard about it. Paul has done a lot for this town since he's been on the board, maybe he's caused some conflicts, I'm not saying he hasn't, but he has done a very good job of helping out. He's done lighting, he's done everything, the park, him and I take care of that park. And, so, I hate to see him do what he's doing, but he has to do what he feels is right. And that's the way, when I took a note to service Pan, I tried to listen to the people, and I tried to be fair to you. And if I'm not, you're free to tell me so.
Any more comments from the public?
I would just like to say that we were talking about the main sewer bill.
Mm-hmm.
It started out at ninety-five dollars, I want you to know.
Yeah, way back then, and you guys got it down.
And we went down to Indianapolis to the State House.
Yeah.
And fought for us.
And it was even lower than sixty-five.
Five?
It was even lower than sixty-five back then, remember?
It was forty-five, then it was forty-five, then it was, you got it.
It wasn't, it was easier numbers of like one eighteen, I thought, at that time, too. I mean, there was a pretty big span of numbers before you guys.
So who set that rate initially, is that set by the county, or who's that set by?
It's governed by the state.
Governed by the state?
Mary, I wanna say thank you for doing that, because, you know, you guys have to.
Yeah, that's what they do.
Yeah.
Something I'd like to say too, this may be my last meeting, I mean, this attorney piece, like I brought up earlier, you know, we're already, we're already, which I know you said forty-five hundred dollars is that, is that, we already sent five hundred bucks into the attorney piece this year. You know, which is a lot. You know.
I've spent that for years.
I just thought of this, I meant to tell you earlier, that quote you got from the video, look at the terms on that, they're kind of.
She did it.
Haven't checked those terms, they're kind of, we're paying for.
The terms are what?
The terms from the video, they wanted basically full payment before we even did test and acceptance.
Oh, we can't do that.
I, I, that's why I said, just look at the terms.
Okay.
The price, the total looked okay to me, it just.
Okay.
We wanted over half just before we, they.
Have to make sure that companies know that, that we cannot pay them, any money that the job is done.
And we approve it.
Right.
We approve right here, yes.
So now you guys have to, this, you guys can hear me sitting out there until I finally do. Yeah.
Sorry to see you go, but I will say, this job, people don't realize how difficult it is, because you stood in that seat, but you think you can just do anything you want, or do this and that. You, you cannot, your hands are tied, I mean, it's like the president, you, you know, sometimes they get in there, they think they can do what they want, they cannot. And you guys can't do really what you think you wanna do, cause there's a lot of rules, regulations, and everything else.
And compromise.
And.
Well, I think we've always been pretty lenient with everybody.
Oh, yeah.
And again, with the alley situation, the only reason why it was, I mean, it's always been open, but we tried to please both, both of them. You know, to the point to where it is today.
My problem was the harassment. And frightening.
Yeah, anyway, we'll take care of that next month when I'm not on the board. Cause there was no harassment. Okay, so, anything else from the public?
I don't know if I should read this or not, but I probably wasn't supposed to get this on my phone, but it was after the February meeting that Kelly put it out there. It's pretty disturbing. No, I can't even find it.
You got your camera, I'll leave it later on.
Well, you go ahead and read that, and then we'll get something that I'll read too, so.
Well, I can't hold up right now, but.
Well, I think at this point, it's a non-issue, I asked for a refraction, I know what I didn't even do, and.
I know what you said about meeting, and all that, that's not true.
Yeah, I admitted to what I said, but, anybody can go back and watch that meeting, I admitted to what I said, and that I have a right to an opinion, just as you do, and the things you say about people, you're diverse.
I don't think all these people needs to hear all this, I mean, they're here.
Well, okay, and she was the one who was gonna bring it up and read it, Paul, so.
I don't know why she's gonna bring it.
That it might just, my disturbing words, so tell her too, that you think it's.
Well, I think, yes, all of us, not just you two, but me too, all of us.
The one thing I see, I'll tell you what, when Mary and Steve and Finn was on this.
They were so mellow.
They did not, just, they disagreed at times, but they did not act like these last two board meetings, not the last two board meetings, the last two boards that we have had.
Well, you're.
I, 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 I'm sorry, but.
That is, that you, the idea of working together is to cover things up and lie for one another, which I do not subscribe to. And, you know what law is, but you just ignore it and do what you wanna do, and. And you know what the law is, but you just ignore it and do what you want to do, and you're exactly right.
There's not a hard meeting anymore.
We are so far removed from what the purpose of council is. It's not gossiping about residents, it's solving the problems. It's not trying to stick it to somebody else every meeting. It is, why did you do this? Who did this? And you, constant criticism, it's, there's no support, it's-
And is the night passing under the president?
It lasts too long, I just want to make sure everybody knew mentally that they have nothing going on.
Yeah.
That's all I want to know.
And I will go on record again saying I never said the word affair.
I didn't say, no, you did not say affair, I'm not saying you did.
You did, just at the beginning of the meeting, Paul, that was recorded.
That's, that's okay, I didn't say that's what you said.
Well, I know what I said and I spoke my opinion, but there were things that were very-
Well, your husband sat over there with a camera.
Anyway, we've already done this, we've already done this.
And I did lean over and I did touch him like this. From his angle on that camera that's posted on YouTube, it might have looked like I had my head on his shoulder, but I've never done that and I've never touched his legs. And I was not sitting practically in his lap, like you said.
You were scooted clear over.
So I agreed, I didn't have a-
Okay, yeah.
I stopped.
This is totally unprofessional.
You know what, I think, I think we need to just like a county takeover to town.
No.
I agree.
No, I agree.
I did too.
You do that, you will not have sidewalks, you will not have roads kept, you will not have streetlights kept. I do not go for that, but if this is how it's gonna be, you guys gotta be a six foot park and you guys gotta be campers only and leave everything out at the door. You really do.
I agree.
If this is going to be, this will be on thing, our town is going to be a laughing stock on the internet. I don't go for videotaping it, I'm sorry, I don't look at that stuff and I don't go for it.
Yeah.
But we are going to be a joke in a half if our town board acts like this. So we've got to do something, I'm sorry, I just can't go with all this anymore. I've been here my whole life and I'm tired. Because you guys wanted the town board off, so they, they all resigned. And it's been a joke in a half since it's been on there.
Who was that?
Steve Olmeyer.
When Steve and them was on there, everyone wanted them off, so they got off, they all resigned. But at least they did their business and they conducted it decently. And I, I like all of you guys, and it's nothing, you know, I'm sorry I'm having to say this, but it's getting out of hand.
It's been out of hand.
Our town is going downhill and I've lived here all my life and I don't like to see this.
It's been going downhill ever since-
I don't like some things done, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't like change. I don't want the alleys in behind my house on the side, I want my grass. As far as that alley over there, you guys had issues, town paid, town stoned it because then no one can say, well, they paid, they stoned it or, you know, and everything else. So they get to use it more, just forget about it and have the town do it. I'm sorry.
All right, anything else from public comments? All right, prove of the checks.
I will say that today I did add a check to Tom for $2,000, that was not on your list.
Yeah, I don't want that sewer.
It was sewer. I'm sorry, for $2,200.
All right, I have to make a motion to approve the checks.
A second.
Vote. Go ahead.
Aye.
Okay, make a motion to adjourn the meeting. At this point, it's done.
Do you need a second?
Second.
A vote?
Yep.
Yep.
One, all right.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Probably.
I'll just Google the concert, is that okay?
That's the table.
Thanks for coming. If there's anything you wanted to say, I can add to you guys my contact.
Thank you.
Would you want to delve in?
Sure.
I know a person on there.
Thank you, sir.
Of course. Stick around, I'll show you guys the room one. Well, thanks for listening, please, I'll quit calling.
Yep, I'm going. Actually, I'm, I'm gonna leave. I was gonna tell you guys in a couple months anyway, but hey, I was gonna do it now. Resign, I'm, this, this is a joke. Do I know? Well, a lot of immaturity that shouldn't be. Good, hey? Somebody have a problem?
Oh, no, I don't mind. Good thing I'm still here, yes.
You go ahead and explain that one to me.
About?
Which one? What did you read what it said or? What did it say? They're pretty good about this. Kind of nice what it says on the-
Did you make that call or did you just go on the other?
No, I did, I did not make that call.
You did not?
A county member did.
So that didn't you?
Well, one of you called, it's probably Kelly.
Okay. That's what I figured.
She did.
Well, I think that you made a lot of calls also, and it's a bit-
The only time I ever called that lawyer was about the property, the swap property that we were given back. And I was told by the board to do that.
And about me and whenever I was, when you did very good things, but I was going.
I never called the lawyer about you, never.
Well, I heard.
Well, I don't care what you heard, I did not call the lawyer about you. And I tell you one thing, a lot of the not relevant people here, she would cure worse great the past four years.
And I also gave my apologies for listening to things that were not true, so that's neither here nor there.
Oh, neither is.
No, it's not, because I-
She stood down there in my salon two times a week, I bitch and bitch and bitch.
Oh, that doesn't really matter, no.
It don't matter, no.
It don't matter, people don't think me and you got something going on.
Well, she did apologize to me, so.
It was a smear campaign.
Excuse me?
It was a smear campaign.
I walked her and Brad around town on this Saturday to introduce him. So I, it was a smear campaign against you. And then she puts on the email that she, I got bratty left.
Well, because she said I was a big men's on line, things like that.
You got a book.
Where are you headed for two weeks?
Well, I'm gonna be in Oregon next week. Then after that, I'm gonna be, talk of Tennessee, Kentucky, all the way.
Well, how do I know she's?
Well, this is kind of vacation work. I leave tonight and then my-
Father, are you with her?
No, not unless, she will when I come back.
Okay.
I'll be back midnight Friday night, and we're gonna be Saturday. To go down there, what we normally do is just cut it there, right, pull the doors.
Well, have a good rest of your night. I sent you an email earlier today, by the way. Oh, okay, I see.